Welcome to the Tuesday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Howl Dean Board of Education meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one Washington under our administration.
Okay, President Clemens here, Rusty Cooper here, Rusty Clemens. Actually, I know. Haven't looked at the agenda in the past couple of hours, but as it stands now, are we?
Should be good.
We're good, okay, all right, so may we have the recommended action to approve the agenda?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? So. So those who are watching the video, we actually started a little bit early, not really of the meeting exactly, but just a few of us here to recognize the tenure recommendations that are on the agenda later on tonight. I got to meet and talk to Kristen Spooner and Erin Casey and their families and as well as hear from their people about all the wonderful things they bring to the district. And that's always a really nice event that we have at the end of the year. So often at the start of a meeting, I'll make note about some of the special events that have happened recently in the district and express gratitude for the work behind those events. But with this being the last board meeting of the school year, I instead want to express gratitude to really all the people who do the work, the day in and day out work, day to day. So the teachers, the teaching assistants, teachers aides, cafeteria workers, maintenance and transportation staff, as well as everyone else who are just really here, you know, doing all the good work that 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 happened at Howl Dean every day. I have some other end of the year comments, but I'm going to save those for board reflections. And then I guess the only other thing that I want to note is that this is the last meeting of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but on July first, the board will have its reorganization meeting, our annual reorganization meeting on Tuesday, July first. It'll be here at six thirty in the middle school, high school library. It will also include, this is important, the public hearing that we have every year for the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Code of Conduct and extracurricular Code of Conduct, and it will be our new superintendent's first day and first board meeting. So clearly, Dr. Duffy has is doing some lots of prep work to come to Howl Dean, which we appreciate. So, Mr. Albono.
Sure, sure, I just have some brief comments. I thought, being that it's the last meeting of the school year and my last meeting with the district, I thought it'd be a good idea just to kind of look back at where we started last, last summer. And you know, some of the goals, I think, you know, sometimes you have to stop and reflect and take a look and realize, you know, how far you've come. So just a quick summary of the goals, and this is nothing new to the board, but for the community, I think it's important that we review this. When I arrived, the board did talk about three, three main goals for the year. One was the capital project referendum, the other was establishing a pre-kindergarten program, and the third, of course, the superintendent search and securing a superintendent, and then helping that person transition and become acclimated. And I must say, I really think we've done a great job with all of these, and it truly was a team effort. You congratulated the staff, staff, faculty, admin team, board. You know, it really was a collaborative effort. So the capital project, just to give you a quick summary there. We met just last week. Schematic designs, you may recall, are complete. Right now, we're in design development phase, which should last maybe one or two more weeks, then that will be completed. And then they move into construction development and budget development, which will take place July, August, September. But we are on schedule. By October, November, you should be able to submit plans to state ed. The turnaround time has has become shorter, which is a positive thing we're hearing from the architects. And it looks very likely that by December or January, if you receive state approval, then you could get out there and bid the job. And that gives you plenty of advance time, because most of the heavy construction will begin next summer. And bidding five or six months in advance will help you get the best pricing. So with that, I think you're in a very good place. And all I ask is, after the new wing is open, I told Dr. Duffy I do want an invite, and I do want to see the new beautiful space firsthand. Pre-kindergarten, I'd like to take credit for it, but Ms. Jammon really did the bulk of this work from start to finish, the planning, the communication to parents, the curriculum alignment, the design of the new classroom. So much went into this, and you know, I'm proud to say that we're going to welcome eighteen four-year-olds in September with the first time ever pre-K program. It's very exciting, and I think academically, you you're going to see a real difference with with curriculum aligned. I think those students really are going to get a strong foundation. And then there's work aligning as they move up into kindergarten and first grade, because I think the foundational skills will be there. So that's exciting. And thirdly, the superintendent search, the board really did that, working with Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses and Lynn and Neil. But then I kind of stepped in. I was glad that we secured Dr. Duffy back in March. It's given thus far, I've had six, at least half-days with Dr. Duffy. Irvington has been great, and they've allowed her to be here on site. Not only has she met with me, she's met with the admin team, our legal counsel, all the various departments. And she'll be here again on Thursday, doing more transitions and planning for that reorg. So it won't be, you know, just jumping in cold, because she will have a background. And I just, I get a sense that Dr. Duffy is going to do an amazing job here, and it's very exciting, and her enthusiasm shows. Also, there's been a few extra things. We had the Nicerta energy study, which which I really think was valuable, and I'm glad that the board was able to, you know, receive all that information. I think the district definitely has a blueprint for future projects that could be energy efficient, lower your carbon footprint, part of the budget potentially bonds down the road. But I think you definitely have a good idea of what things make sense as far as, you know, being, you know, efficient with energy. Also, what we have, and I was hoping to have closure on these before I left, but we have the EPA grant for six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which would help offset the cost of four electric buses. We're really hopeful there is no news. As of just an hour ago, I checked before the meeting, so I was just hoping to deliver good news. But I think, you know, even if you don't get it this year, I would strongly recommend reapply. With that grant money and EPA and Nicerta combined, I do think it'll make sense, and you could start transitioning to electric. Smaller amount, but still not insignificant. We have a twenty thousand dollar grant into Dana Levinberg's office, Assembly Levinberg. I'm very optimistic that's to help with pre-K startup cost, because there were some extra things and curriculum and materials. And Dana Levinberg is a big supporter of education, former board member herself. So we should get an answer from that within a few weeks as well, and I hopefully that will come through. So lastly, I will just say it's been a true honor for me. I need to thank this board for the opportunity. I thoroughly enjoyed the year, meeting students like Mark and Scotia, who are going to be up here in a minute and getting, haven't gotten to know all the students, but the ones I have have just been truly amazing. And the admin team, the faculty, the staff in general has just been wonderful. So I think it's been a successful year, and I wish you well. And I said this to Dr. Duffy and Peggy, but the whole board, I am available. If you, you know, have a question, some of these initiatives, just want a little history, please don't hesitate to reach out. It would be a pleasure to, you know, have a phone conversation and be helpful, because you have some exciting things happening here, and that's all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So now, oh, actually, so yes, so now we're going to move into the presentations from our student in five years, starting with valedictorian Mark. Oh, it's on the agenda, it's two separate things, sorry about that. A new plan on you.
We're just going to talk about these things. So on Wednesday, May first, we had an amazing showing of the annual Helping Arts Alliance Awards, and many of the students had the opportunity to perform. And so, as you know, the challenge blew us all away, so that was really great.
And we celebrated our seniors on Friday, May twenty-ninth, at the annual senior dinner. Thank you to the PTA, specifically Rebecca Pierceall and Boltie and Heather Ferreira for their organization support. Thank you to the Howl Dean School Foundation, the Lanza family for their generous grant and donation.
Yeah, so we watched our, like, gift of memories there, it was really special. And so I know Micah for her internship had to do part-time with at the school, and she worked with Ms. Pierceall to get the video together. And then also the Lanza family, they basically donated their space to us to use for our dinner, so that was really special, and it's like nice to have, you know, senior family representation to host us all, and that was great. And then our annual literary magazine was published. If you haven't already received one and would like to, they are available. And thank you to Ms. Pierce, Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Booth for their hard work and dedication to magazines. And this year, we had students, our students dedicated our magazine to Ms. Kelly Martin, the intended state in Creeter.
We had many successful clubs that are school this year. The Howl It's Our Rival Club did a great job of bringing back the goats for the spring season, to clean up that patch coming back. As well, the senior and junior prom was incredible at Hotel Theater. I feel like it was nice to keep the photos of Bosco Bell, the scenery and such, but going to the hotel, it felt more spacious, and many people agreed that they enjoyed it this year a lot more than the last year. So that was great. And finally, on Tuesday, the seniors had the opportunity to gather and celebrate their full last day of school. So we're just thankful to all the seniors and the teachers that made it awesome for us to, like, cook breakfast from the teachers to our pranks, look down the hill, it was all really fun.
We also had our yearbook distributed at the senior dinner and the picnic. And we want to thank Ms. Corneese and Ms. Parra for leading the yearbook club this year, and mostly every year. But this year, it was dedicated to Ms. Martinez as well, which is very special. And then we also want to congratulate our Bowses graduates, Enzo Lee Alhov, Jayden Trailer, Isana Tavarez, Jacob Telling, Tyler Hyatt, Harley Sporbert, Sage Fredericks, Catherine Horton, and Shania Vaskin-Sailors. And we also want to congratulate our Senior of the Year, Dominica Almanach, and she was chosen by our Helping Back team staff.
And then on June eleventh, the geometry students, their, the new geometry regions exam. And this provided time for the science department to review both the living environmental earth science regions and just a lot of time for Mark Patinella. We thank him a lot as well for organizing both science department to get through grain the regions in the prom manner.
So yeah, all the rest of the schools, I guess, just taking exams in full time.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah. Did you all, like, have a graduation on Friday night? And had you been to graduation when it was on Saturday morning?
No, yeah, on Saturday morning, but I think I heard that it was a really long time ago.
Long ago.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, because I really, I heard, I heard a lot of people really liked Friday night graduation. I didn't know you all might have been the start of a new book.
Yeah.
Just like, prepare the whole weekend, like, with family and friends, but it was great, yeah, and the weather was nice.
Yeah, definitely, because, I mean, last, last year's graduation, I remember having just a big sunburn for me. Hot, and like, right this morning, it was pretty brutal, and I'm sure, and even in the gowns, it was humid for us, but it wasn't like unbearable, because it was, it was definitely cooler, but it was, I think, a nicer change, too. It was, it was kind of fun to do something different as well.
With the sunset, right?
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah. And how were y'all's internship experiences? I mean, we're kind of different, because we both did ours with our parents. But, I mean, I still had a lot that I learned, and my parents were, like, they take it very seriously. So I still definitely got a full, like, internship experience. Yeah, it was, it was really nice, especially just to spend time with my family, but I achieved all my goals. And, I mean, I'm definitely excited to go into, like, a similar field. I also, like, it opened up more opportunities in my, I mean, my parents always asked me, are you going to be an architect? And it's actually funny, hearing all, like, schematic designs, the TD, and I certainly go to my bus, but it's like, you're all the time, so. But, yeah, it's like, it's nice, too, because I haven't, like, thrown out architecture in part of my, like, career, future career endeavors, I guess. So, yeah, it's definitely nice if you get to get those lessons in the school.
Did it give you insight into your parents by working with them?
Oh, yeah, it's like, I've been hearing since I, eighteen years ago, since I was born, right? They have their little business, and like, they keep saying the same things, and I'm like, oh, whatever that is, right? Now, I was like, now I know how how their business works. Like, I got to do a bunch of different things, like, from the dirty work and accounting and stuff, and to the, to like, actual, like, events and operations, since they have, like, a travel company. It was really fun, and I got to see, like, what they've been doing for the past eighteen years, and like, oh, this is really cool. So they're like, a travel company to do with, like, corporate travel, specifically, like pharmaceuticals from Spain. So I got to get some hands-on experience in Chicago, that they had, like, a convention there for oncology, so it was fun.
Now, Scotia, you mentioned that, you know, you were working with your parents, but really, you know, I mean, just about James's other really important job as a bagpiper. Did, have you taken up the pipes?
I mean, he, if he's ever going to watch this, he'll get mad at me. Join, and like, I'd rather, but it's, it's a hard, it's really hard, it's true. I mean, it would be, like, definitely a fun talent, say, and I can play the scale.
There we go. How many, how many times have we had a piper lead the kids out of the, well, also?
It was really awesome, too, because I was talking to Ms. Niffen in the beginning of the year, and we just popped the idea, what if we had him, like, walk us back out? Because we've never had, like.
I liked that. Usually, everybody gets.
Yeah, I like, I like. It was really nice, and now there's always the joke to say, like, they're going to pipe us out, so. Yeah, it was really special, it was great.
Your speeches were beautiful, congratulations, we really value that, your process and leaving.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations. So we're now at the first opportunity for communication from the public. The Howl Dean Board of Education desires a values input from the entire school community. The first public comment session is reserved for comments and special presentations and active agenda items for anyone who wish to address the board. We'd ask you to sign in and state your name, to avoid disparaging remarks and discussion of personnel and to leave your contact information so that we can get in touch with you to follow up. Next, on our agenda are the administrator information reports that everyone has access to. I'll have to say, as is often the case, just great things in there to look at, some real successes. I think it's really, actually, a lot of really, from Mr. Cunningham about some of the successes of our sports teams at the end of the year. I mean, there's good stuff in all of them. Oh, and very exciting, the new, the curriculum for the science of reading. Yeah, this really, it's a big, this is a big year, man.
Lot going on.
We anticipate, the decision only came recently, and we wanted to give the teachers time for some feedback and a chance to say, like, all right, this is what we're saying, we'd like to adopt.
So it's still, it's still in this day.
Well, they had that chance, but not with enough time for us to then put together a presentation for you. So this board report is here, but we'll put together a formal presentation for the fall. Oh, we wanted you to at least have the information, so that then as we plan PD and all of those things for the fall, you're not uninformed that that's the direction we're going.
Yeah, and I thought it was a really nice layout of, like, the rationale for Florida and this, and yeah, it was great.
So we will get more details in the formal report to come.
Thank you very much for that. All right, so we're going to move into consent.
Do we do, I never remember, do we have to do the second before the rest of us? Do we have to make a motion before the rest of us chime in with anything?
Oh, no, 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 this, this is just, this is, there's no, there's no motion on this, yes. I was waiting, I didn't hear anything, go ahead, yes. There's, we're not taking action, so you can just speak, yeah, okay.
Dr. Soffe, was this the first year that the eighth graders did a dinner dance?
No, so, yeah, no, no.
It's happened before, okay.
It happened before, but during COVID, there was a hiatus of the dinner.
Okay, okay, I knew there was a dance, I didn't know it was a dinner dance.
I don't think it happened last year.
They, the, yeah, at St. Mary's, they do.
Yeah, okay.
And what's the rekey, I know Adam's not here, but what's the rekeying project?
I think that's the doors.
They're starting with the exterior doors, and then ultimately plan to do movement to interior doors as well.
Okay, thank you. Self-explanatory.
Long time, and probably more widespread key access than we should have. And so just working on some, I think, tightening up that it's been a while, and yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, the safety is, it's one of these ongoing, as you can, yeah, one of these ongoing things, but yeah. They have been busy.
The swipes have obviously changed a lot now, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
I apologize if I need to quickly, so now we're going to go into, oh, next, actually, we're not moving into consent agenda, next is actually the committee minutes, and there's a lot of stuff in that the committees have been doing. So were you, were you at the last wellness?
I was.
That is, that, that well-sat undertaking, that was really.
Dr. Soffe did a good job in reading that and, and kind of pulling, there's massive amounts of information. Some things we discussed were a little, like, we could tweak, or what wasn't a huge hit, but really was a massive undertaking, and obviously, credit goes to the committee for really doing that work.
Well, I know the committee has wanted the policy to be, to, to really make sure the policy is, the wellness policy is really reflecting sort of what's happening, and that was really a multi-step. I actually went and, you know, did a little looking into what it is, but that's a really, it would be an undertaking for anybody.
Yeah, and wellness is a thing that is constantly being updated, you know, we learn new information. And also, the community has actually a good amount of information, knowledge, and also opinions about it. And it's good to really get a decent pulse about what's happening and where we kind of expect to go with wellness.
Well, thanks to everybody on the technology committee, the wellness committee, and the Code of Conduct committee. And so now we'll move to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Once again, thanks very much to the Howl Dean School Foundation. We have two out-of-cycle grants that they've provided. One is for the Howl Dean Forest Loop, which I actually didn't really even know. I mean, I knew theoretically that we own that land, but I didn't, I always, anyway, that's very interesting and exciting to be taking advantage of that, that space. And then more work around the Lori Essler Outdoor Classroom, which I have to say, anytime I come onto campus, I feel like there's always somebody there, so.
We're utilizing our space really well. It's really nice to see, and continued support by the community to get our kids outside as much as possible. I mean, it's great.
Is there anything else? The rest of it is. Important things, but not things we need to talk about. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, and next is consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
So on here, we have the tenure recognitions that we already got to celebrate a little bit. And very, I mean, lots of things, but also very exciting is the approval to create the position of Director of Technology and CIO position that Leah Horn will be taking over after her many years of, of working as a TOSA in many of these capacities. And. Yeah, that's, is there anything else I want to note? Actually, also important, honestly, the appointment of our head cleaners is just actually a really important position. Those people do really important work, and we appreciate them stepping up to the plate to take on these additional responsibilities. I took the motion, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Congratulations.
Thanks very much to Mary Ann and Christine for, you know, I mean, I know getting fancy tenure to your teachers is a nice thing, but it's really nice always to hear all the great things you all have to say and to get to read what you write.
And it's, I think we do it well, and it's really positive to see. You know, tenure is not a guarantee, and it's a commitment by a school district. I think it's really, it's really wonderful, we're able to acknowledge great teaching and then accept tenure. I think it's great.
It's great, this is a nice meeting. So now we're moving into new business, and we have the CSE, CPSE recommendations. Maybe we have the recommended action phase.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
So moved.
Oh, yeah, second, that's fine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so next is policy review, two policies, it's the first reading of both. And my reading of what's in executive content is that, has the policy committee hasn't had a chance to see these, is that right, Michelle?
We looked at them.
See, yeah, okay, because the way it was written, it sounded like maybe they had come in, and they had just gone to other places, and we needed to act on them, but that's not.
Yes, that happened, but they did have an opportunity to review them before this time, okay.
And actually, I'll be honest, there's some more information here. But these, I mean, as usual, these are policies that are written by Erie One, they, these are laws and regulations that you have to follow. I know. Anyway, the internet, I'll tell you, the internet-enabled devices, I know that's going to be a challenge for the district. But we do have to, this is one of those policies that we do adopt. Is there anything that you wanted to add, Michelle?
I mean, it's, it's been part of the policy committee meeting, also the Code of Conduct Committee meeting, which is interesting, Julia presented the results of the survey, which, I mean, there was opinions that, you know, were varied, but I feel like by and large, there is a lot of support in the community for doing this.
Oh, really? All right, all right, that's good. Oh, actually, and in fact, I've read those committee minutes, the Code of Conduct, and you raised a really good point in the minutes from the Code of Conduct. Michelle's comment is, will the teachers, what was it, will the teachers model?
Right.
Like, like phones, you know, help, yeah, I thought that was a really smart.
Right, and just, you know, if, if the goal of all of this is to increase kind of face-to-face interaction, you know, is it really just about the students, or is it kind of a broader culture issue?
It's a great question, so.
That's something that just has to get figured out over all these discussions.
So first reading, and that's actually really good, so we will act on these at the reorg meeting. So now it's the second opportunity for communication for the public, if you have any just matter. Or reflection? So I'm going to actually sort of tell a lot of the same things Carl said, but I'll be brief about it. So this is my opportunity to thank Mr. Albono for his service to the district this year. I say this all the time, I think being superintendent of school district has to be one of the hardest jobs in the United States. I mean, I really, it's such a hard job. You need to be successful, you need. I mean, I really, it's such a hard job. You need to be successful, you need to have all these. You know, you need to be emotionally intelligent and have all these interpersonal skills, but you need to have expertise and experience in teaching and learning. Human resources, buildings and grounds, school district finance, policy and law. And, and be able to really interact with so many different people of all different kinds of ages and families and staff. And it's, and interact with the Board of Education, you know. Um, and I really believe that Howding was so fortunate to have Mr. Albano, to have you as our interim superintendent this year. From the very beginning, he was dealing with very typical and actually kind of not always, not so typical problems. That school districts encounter, that it really require knowledge and expertise. And Mr. Albano came to us with such a deep well of, of, of that. And I think, you know, I think it benefited the district, you know. You know, as one can imagine, school district, as one can imagine, just superintendents are, are different. And they bring different perspectives and different ways of interacting with us. And I know that I, and, and I hope other people in the district and on the board. Um, had the opportunity to learn some new ways of thinking about how we, how we do things, you know. Like, it's, it's good to have different perspectives and to sort of bring in a fresh set of eyes. And, you know, we had the opportunity to do that, albeit for a brief period of time. Um, so together with the administrative team and the staff and the community and the board, you know, it wasn't a partnership. You know, I agree, we, we accomplished some really, uh, important milestones. We passed Capital Project Bond Referendum and started to really work, the real work to begin those projects. Completed and received the results from the FLEX study that we conducted in part with the funds from the New York State. Um, Energy and Research, Energy Research and Development Authority, the NYSERTA. Um, pre-K, uh, the, uh, Mr. Albano has done so work to help transition to our new superintendent, Dr. Duffy. The work around the buses, you know, whenever people came to the district and wanted to have a meeting or talk something. About something, and Mr. Albano was always willing to meet with them and listen and then to react and respond, not just react, but then to respond. To, to, to what they learned and heard in those meetings. You know, and you mentioned the grant proposals that, um, you know, if they come through. Uh, will certainly help reduce the high costs of making the transition to electron, electric buses. But even if something happens and they don't, we learned so much this year. So I am really grateful and, you know, I've tried throughout the year to thank you, but I did want to more formally give a formal thanks. And so, um, yeah, the twenty-four, twenty-five school years, done. Thank you so much.
It's been my pleasure. My pleasure. Thank you for your kind words.
You're welcome.
I'll add my thanks, just being, you know, first-year board member. I found you particularly approachable and available. Even, you know, despite how busy you are, you are always there to respond to my questions, pick up the phone, answer my emails. So I thank you for that. You were a very good superintendent to have during my first year on the board and you shepherd us, shepherd us through the Capital Project very well. So here we are.
There was huge advantage of bringing Carl in. Uh, Carl has institutional knowledge. That was invaluable in the Capital Project. Um, and also just in, 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 in how we hire and, and how we understand job roles and things like that. So you've, you've really brought incredible knowledge and you're calm. Carl is a very. Most of the time.
Uh, most of the time. It might be that dog. I don't know, yeah. So you. It's a calm guy. Uh, which is, which is very good. And, and just a, um, he's warm, he's calm, he has institutional knowledge. You're, you're, you really are a very good, uh, interim superintendent. You, you, you've rolled in, you, you, you roll it out. Uh, and you've made the place better. And this was a tough place to make better. And I think you did, I think you did a good job.
I really appreciate those words. I, I'm not comfortable being the focus of, but I deeply appreciate, appreciate. And, and it's been a great year.
Good, yeah. Good. It's, it's actually, it's also, I have to say, it's very gratifying. We've had some other people who've come in and be interims and it's always very gratifying to hear what a meaningful experience it is for people. Like, it's something for us to feel proud about, you know, for people to come in and spend a year or a year or two here and then talk about how. That, how the experience was positive for them. And I'm glad it was a positive experience for you.
Incredibly positive, yes.
Great. Alright, so I think, oh, do you have any? Oh, and is there anything else anybody wanted to add?
I just want to say, I thought graduation was incredible. Everybody involved in graduation. And I'll, I'll, I'll forget everybody's name, but just, just know that it, it is an incredible. Opportunity for this community to come together. I mean, people who don't have kids are sitting up on that hill. Right? I mean, that's what's wild. And, uh, they, uh, there's, there's something magical about that. Bringing, bringing in the guys who are on their fiftieth. Uh, uh, year reunion, you know, that's really cool. And you can tell that, and there were moments in that graduation that were very emotional.
Yeah.
Wild, wildly emotional. And the, the, just the community behind those kids at that moment is special. And so, thank you to everybody who.
A lot of work.
Did that undertaking for graduation.
That was very nice. Yeah, thanks, Ezra.
May I, just, because I didn't say anything earlier, but can I speak about Leah, Leah Horn?
Yeah.
No, this is a.
We already said you were inside.
No, I, I just, I just need to say thank you to the board for, for supporting, you know, the proposal. It was recommended through the budget process and, and you've heard me say this before, but. Technology had, the demands have grown exponentially for, for school districts. And Leah, who started as a science teacher, am I correct?
Yes.
Then evolved into this TOSA position, but it was more instructional technology. But her role kept growing and growing and growing and the demands and the responsibilities. And she really has been functioning as a director of technology. Um, and it, it was obvious to me when I first arrived, the rest of the admin team, the leadership team. And, you know, cybersecurity, AI, uh, all the various software programs, communication programs. That the district continues to, to explore and leverage to become more efficient. You know, behind the scenes, you, you need someone competent, experienced, well-networked. To handle all of that. And, and, and it, it doesn't always go noticed. It's not like a high visible thing that Leah does, but it's critically important. So I just want to say thank you for, for supporting the recommendation. Um, but she earned the, the position without question over the years and I know it's gonna serve the district well. Uh, in the years ahead. So congratulations to you and thank you to the board.
And besides, do you still go on the Frost Valley trip?
Really?
Oh, wow. Alright. Alright, well, um, there we go. So I move to adjourn the meeting. You have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.